Morning, everyone. We're gonna get started now. We have a quorum and ask all guests and visitors to please retire behind the rail. And as the members take their seats, we'll get started. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Derek Brennan of Canaan Baptist Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilman Derek Green. I would ask all guests and visitors and members to please rise.
Good morning.
Good morning.
To our council president, Councilman Clark, who is Councilman for my home district, as well as to Council Lady Bass, who is in the district of our church, councilperson Blondell Reynolds Brown, a friend of Canaan, and to Councilman Derek Green, a Canaanite and a brother. Let us bow our heads for a word of prayer. Gracious and everlasting God, we thank you for this day, and Lord, we are so grateful that the earth is yours in the fullness thereof. Lord God, we continue to pray for our global family, especially those impacted by war, refugee status, as well as the Zika virus. Lord God, we pray for our nation, for our President, our Congress, our Senate, and Lord God, we remember those in Flint, Michigan, and so many others, Lord, who are going through such a difficult time. We pray for our state, Governor Wolf, and all of the legislators in Harrisburg. And Father God, we pray for this great city, our mayor, Mayor Kenny. We pray for this great council session. And so, Lord God, we say thank you for the wisdom, and Lord, we pray for even more for each of these council persons and all who are here today. We thank you, Lord God, for vision. We pray for even more, Lord, not only for the immediate, but also the ultimate, especially vision for the least of these among us. We thank you, God, for the work ethic and the sacrifice of these individuals who lead this city. Lord, we ask that you renew them and keep them, but also, Lord God, we thank you for the love, for the love that is born not simply out of the ballot that has been cast, but, Lord, out of a sense of service and duty to make a difference for each Philadelphian. And so, Lord God, we ask that the words of William Penn would continue to be true, that Father God, we would be true friends who unbosom freely, advise justly, assist readily, adventure boldly, take all patiently, defend courageously, and continue as friends unchangeably. In the name of Jesus to Christ, we do pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor, for those inspiring words, and council will be at ease. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. And again, Pastor, thank you for those inspiring words. Folks, can I ask why, please? Thank you. Our next order of business will be approval of the journal. The meeting of Thursday, February 4th, 2016, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 4th, 2016, be approved.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 4th, 2016. Stand and approve all those in favor say aye, those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is request for these absences, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for these absences today.
Chair, thanks to the gentlemen. On behalf of the minority, Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. On behalf of the minority, there is a request for an excused absence for Councilman Brian O'Neal. He is ill today.
Chair, thanks to the gentlemen, and leave shall be granted. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business and recognize the guests and the visitors joining us in the chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of City Council, I welcome you to our council session, and we appreciate you taking time out of your busy day. We hope that you truly enjoy yourself. Witnessing democracy in action is always a good thing, and we actually practice true democracy in this chamber. So, I hope that you enjoy yourself so much that you come back again. Again, thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass, who will present a resolution recognizing M.O.TEP Institute Charter High School football program. With Coach Al Crosby and those accompanying him, please join the Councilwoman at the podium. And joining Councilwoman Bass, we have Councilwoman Parker, Councilman Green, and Councilman Heenan. And we also have Councilman Johnson.
Well, can we start by just giving a round of applause to all of these fantastic young people? You know, so often, so often, as we all know, you know, on the news, they cover the planes that crash, they don't cover the ones that land. And they don't look at our young people as much as they should, who are doing fantastic, phenomenal things, who have bright futures, who are working hard, who know about success, and who have done great work, prepared themselves for this moment. And I am just so encouraged and so thrilled to welcome M.O.TEP here. And we have a resolution this morning, which reads, honoring and recognizing M.O.TEP Institute Charter High School football program for a phenomenal season and for making Philadelphia history by becoming the city's first public league team to win a Pennsylvania Interscholastic Athletic Association state championship. All right. I'm so proud of you. Whereas, on December 18th, 2015, M.O.TEP charter went on to make Philadelphia history by defeating two-time state champion Cathedral Prep in a spectacular 40-3 victory in the Pennsylvania Interscholastic Athletic Association state championship game. And...
Whereas, M.O.TEP's journey to winning the state championship actually began two years ago in Hershey Park Stadium, when they became the first Philadelphia public school team to reach the state championship game. Unfortunately, at that time, they came up short. And whereas, M.O.TEP has come a long way from its humble roots in East Germantown, their tireless determination culminated with a perfect 15-0 season, as well as setting a title game record of 514 total yards on offense. And...
Whereas, for the past four years, M.O.TEP football program has been directed by head coach Alby Crosby. He and his devoted coaching staff has transformed a small school of 600 students into a state football powerhouse with a four-year overall record of 53 wins and only six losses.
Whereas, Coach Al Crosby goes beyond the role of any head coach serving as a mentor for his hard-working players, guiding them both on and off the field. Coach Crosby juggles many responsibilities on a daily basis, from helping players find housing to finding a field for the team to practice. And...
And whereas Coach Crosby has always inspired his student athletes to prosper, stressing the value of teamwork, individual excellence, and perseverance through adversity, Crosby takes satisfaction in seeing his players grow into men as they continue to pursue and accomplish their goals. Over 30 M.O.TEP graduates currently continue their athletic careers with scholarships to colleges and universities. Now therefore be it... Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that it hereby honors and recognizes M.O.TEP Institute Charter High School football program for a phenomenal season and for making Philadelphia history by becoming the city's first public league team to win a PIAA state championship. Further resolve that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to M.O.TEP Charter High School football program as evidence of the deep admiration of this legislative body. They are an inspiration to us all and a positive reflection of our great city. Congratulations.
Chair recognizes Coach Crosby for remarks.
Thank you very much. My name is Coach Al Crosby. I just want to say thank you, extremely proud that the City Council would invite our young people to come into your space. Also want to thank District 12, Robert Coleman, Dr. Robert Coleman. He assisted and helped us through this whole process and was there for us every step of the way. Just a quick thing on M.O.TEP. M.O.TEP Charter High School is a small football, a small school located in the northwest section of Philadelphia. We started the football program approximately about 13 years ago. I've been a head football coach for four years. During this time of being a head football coach, I've kind of understood our young people in our space. I was formerly, I was the offensive coordinator at West Catholic, and I thought I came across every situation. When I came to M.O.TEP, I learned that there was a few of our young people that were homeless. And I thought I was able to handle every situation, but when I got that situation, the young people that were homeless, they were able to embrace our program, they brought into our structure, and they were young people that you didn't even realize that were going through different types of transitions, situations. We then became a unit, and they started to believe in our structure and our vision and our plan. We started winning some football games, then they started to believe. Once they believed, we just started gathering success. And now, I'm very proud to say that we have 15 seniors graduating from high school, and all those seniors are going on a secondary education. The other thing, the other thing which I'm extremely proud of is, none of those young men are playing at the highest level of college football that you could possibly play at. We have young men going, a young man going to Florida State, another young man going to Oklahoma, San Diego State, Penn State University, Temple University, New Hampshire, Delaware State, Rhode Island, no, we had one previously at Arizona State. And one that's really extremely proud to my heart because of the City of Philadelphia, we get scrutinized about our academic standards, but we have a young person going to Vanderbilt University. Extremely proud of him. Our school, our school is very committed to our young people. Not only are they committed to us as regards to athletics, it's the part that I'm kind of overseeing with the football part, but our school is very committed to our young people in regards to the community, but academics stands a very strong force for our school. And it's one of the things that we preach every single day. We talk about the SAT, ACT, we talk about Khan Academy, we talk about our young people just being successful, young people in our society. And these guys come from youth football programs across the city of Philadelphia, and if you're a Raider, a Blackhawk, a Aztec, a Monarch, a Bantam, they follow these, they follow their leads. And Hurricane, Wildcat, I apologize, but they follow their leads, and so those are the young guys that hopefully they're standing, hopefully we can make this a regular thing and we're standing in front of you every year. And that's the plan, so I just want to say thank you again.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for having us here today. The Board of M.O.TEP Institute Charter School and its family community, we would like to thank the City of Philadelphia for this esteemed acknowledgement of these amazing athletes. We would like to honor and thank the parents, the coaches, the teachers, and our phenomenal administrators for their unwavering support of our young scholar athletes. And remember, I said scholar athletes. Most of all, we want to say a powerful ache to all these young men. Ache.
Ache.
We are in the business of producing the new Paul Robinsons and other great African ancestors that set the course for collective change in this country and the world. A special thanks to Councilwoman Cindy Bass, Robert Coleman, and the School District of Philadelphia for their tremendous support. Thank you all for the love and light in sharing this extraordinary moment, and we have an affirmation that we want to share with the City of Philadelphia.
Shaka, can you lead us in an affirmation statement?
One, two, three.
We are the citizens of great African fathers, great African mothers.
We are the pride, strength, and power of the motherland. Help us do things we must do because of the same I am because we are.
We are because I am. When I shine, the nation shines. When the nation shines, we all shine. M.O.TEP. Right, thank you all.
Council will be at ease. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. And again, Pastor, thank you for those inspiring words, and council will be at ease. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor, for those inspiring words, and council will be at ease. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business and recognize the guests and the visitors joining us in the chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of City Council, I welcome you to our council session, and we appreciate you taking time out of your busy day. We hope that you truly enjoy yourself. Witnessing democracy in action is always a good thing, and we actually practice true democracy in this chamber. So, I hope that you enjoy yourself so much that you come back again. Again, thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass, who will present a resolution recognizing M.O.TEP Institute Charter High School football program. With Coach Al Crosby and those accompanying him, please join the Councilwoman at the podium. And joining Councilwoman Bass, we have Councilwoman Parker, Councilman Green, and Councilman Heenan.
Yes.
And we also have Councilman Johnson.
We still coming?
Well, can we, can we start by just giving a round of applause to all of these fantastic young people? You know, so often, so often, as we all know, you know, on the news, they cover the planes that crash, they don't cover the ones that land. And they don't look at our young people as much as they should, who are doing fantastic, phenomenal things, who have bright futures, who are working hard, who know about success, and who have done great work, prepared themselves for this moment. And I am just so encouraged and so thrilled to welcome M.O.TEP here. And we have a resolution this morning, which reads, honoring and recognizing M.O.TEP Institute Charter High School football program for a phenomenal season and for making Philadelphia history by becoming the city's first public league team to win a PIAA state championship. Further resolve that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to M.O.TEP Charter High School football program as evidence of the deep admiration of this legislative body. They are an inspiration to us all and a positive reflection of our great city. Congratulations.
Chair recognizes Coach Crosby for remarks.
Thank you very much. My name is Coach Al Crosby. I just want to say thank you, extremely proud that the City Council would invite our young people to come into your space. Also want to thank District 12, Robert Coleman, Dr. Robert Coleman. He assisted and helped us through this whole, this whole process and was there for us every step of the way. Just a quick thing on M.O.TEP. M.O.TEP Charter High School is a small football, a small school located in the northwest section of Philadelphia. We started the football program approximately about 13 years ago. I've been a head football coach for four years. During this time of being a head football coach, I've kind of understood our young people in our space. I was formerly, I was the offensive coordinator at West Catholic, and I thought I came across every situation. When I came to M.O.TEP, I learned that there was a few of our young people that were homeless. And I thought I was able to handle every situation, but when I got that situation, the young people that were homeless, they were able to embrace our program, they brought into our structure, and they were young people that you didn't even realize that were going through different types of transitions, situations. We then became a unit, and they started to believe in our structure and our, our vision and our plan. We started winning some football games, then they started to believe. Once they believed, we just started gathering success. And now, I'm very proud to say that we have 15 seniors graduating from high school, and all those seniors are going on a secondary education. The other thing, the other thing which I'm extremely proud of is, none of those young men are playing at the highest level of college football that you could possibly play at. We have young men going, a young man going to Florida State, another young man going to Oklahoma, San Diego State, Penn State University, Temple University, New Hampshire, Delaware State, Rhode Island, no, we have, we had one previously at Arizona State. And one that's really extremely proud to my heart because of the City of Philadelphia, we get scrutinized about our academic standards, but we have a young person going to Vanderbilt University. Extremely proud of him. Our school, our school is very committed to our young people. Not only are they committed to us as in regards to athletics, it's the part that I'm kind of overseeing with the football part, but our school is very committed to our young people in regards to the community, but academics stands a very strong force for our school. And it's one of the things that we preach every single day. We talk about the SAT, ACT, we talk about Khan Academy, we talk about our young people just being successful, young people in our society. And these guys come from youth football programs across the city of Philadelphia, and if you're a Raider, a Blackhawk, an Aztec, a Monarch, a Bantam, they follow these, they follow their leads. And Hurricane, Wildcat, I apologize, but they follow their leads, and so those are the young guys that hopefully they're standing, hopefully we can make this a regular thing and we're standing in front of you every year. And that's the plan, so I just want to say thank you again.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for having us here today. The Board of M.O.TEP Institute Charter School and its family community, we would like to thank the City of Philadelphia for this esteemed acknowledgement of these amazing athletes. We would like to honor and thank the parents, the coaches, the teachers, and our phenomenal administrators for their unwavering support of our young scholar athletes. And remember, I said scholar athletes. Most of all, we want to say a powerful ache to all these young men. Ache.
Ache.
We are in the business of producing the new Paul Robinsons and other great African ancestors that set the course for collective change in this country and the world. A special thanks to Councilwoman Cindy Bass, Robert Coleman, and the School District of Philadelphia for their tremendous support. Thank you all for the love and light in sharing this extraordinary moment, and we have an affirmation that we want to share with the City of Philadelphia.
Shaka, can you lead us in an affirmation statement?
One, two, three.
We are the citizens of great African fathers, great African mothers.
We are the pride, strength, and power of the motherland. Help us do things we must do because of the same I am because we are.
We are because I am. When I shine, the nation shines. When the nation shines, we all shine. M.O.TEP. Right, thank you all.
Council will be at ease. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who will present a presentation recognizing Dr. Evelyn Graves. Would Dr. Graves and those accompanying her, please join the Councilwoman at the podium? And joining Councilwoman Blackwell, we have Councilwoman Gimm, Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwell. And we welcome not only her lovely daughters, whom I've known since they were children, and certainly to Dr. Graves and members of the community, who are also here to honor her and the other members of her family who are here. Resolution naming 5400 Chester Avenue and the 1400 and 1500 blocks of South 55th Street as, quote, "Dr. Evelyn Graves Way," in recognizing and in recognition of Dr. Graves' 45 years of exemplary service to the community. Whereas, Dr. Graves is a historic treasure in southwest Philadelphia. Starting out in 1970s as a housewife and mother of six, she had a burning desire to reach out to the youth of her community. And...
Whereas, Dr. Graves honored and acknowledged by the National Association for the Advancement of Color People as a legend, and whereas, Dr. Graves was recognized as a pioneer in the creative and performing arts, who has empowered generations of African-American families by several presidents, including Bill Clinton and President Barack Obama. And whereas, Dr. Graves provided basic necessities of life in the community with food, housing, cultural arts, education, spirituality, and hope in the targeted areas of west and southwest Philadelphia and Delaware County.
And whereas, Dr. Graves created 37 programs in the Evelyn Graves ministry, including the Evelyn Graves Drama Productions, the pre-K through 12 Grade Academy, the School of Performing Arts, the Daycare Center, the Christ Chapel Church, the Summer Day Camp Program, and after-school programs. Whereas, Dr. Graves traveled and presented over four decades of history in cultural and performing arts that include showcasing by emerging artists in 35 different states, seven different countries, including eastern and western Caribbean and South Korea.
Whereas, Dr. Graves has reached over half a million families locally and internationally. Whereas, Evelyn Graves Ministry's headquarters, located at the corner of 55th and Chester Avenue, has petitioned the city and its involved residents to have the streets that flank the headquarters to be given the honorary designation as "Dr. Evelyn Graves Way." And...
Now therefore be it resolved that the Philadelphia City Council hereby names 5400 Chester Avenue and the 1400 and 1500 blocks of South 55th Street as "Dr. Evelyn Graves Way," in recognition of Dr. Graves' 45 years of exemplary service to the community. Further resolve that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Dr. Evelyn Graves as a sincere expression of the Philadelphia City Council's gratitude and recognition. Congratulations.
Chair recognizes Dr. Graves for remarks.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Cassandra Graves, Dr. Evelyn Graves' daughter, and I'm flanked by my family, all six of her children that she birthed. We all have worked in the organization in one capacity or another, so it gives us a great honor to be able to accept this award for Dr. Evelyn Graves for 45 years, 45 years, just reaching out and helping the underserved, those who were forgot about. But we are here today to say thank you to our mother, thank you for President Councilman Janie Blackwell, and...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And again, congratulations. And again, congratulations. And again, congratulations. Thank you. And again, congratulations. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who will present a presentation At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who will present a presentation At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who will present a presentation At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who will present a presentation recognizing Dr. Evelyn Graves. recognizing Dr. Evelyn Graves. recognizing Dr. Evelyn Graves. recognizing Dr. Evelyn Graves. Would Dr. Graves and those accompanying her please join the Councilwoman at the podium? Would Dr. Graves and those accompanying her please join the Councilwoman at the podium? Would Dr. Graves and those accompanying her please join the Councilwoman at the podium? Would Dr. Graves and those accompanying her please join the Councilwoman at the podium? In joining Councilwoman Blackwell, we have Councilwoman Gimm, Councilwoman Bladell Reynolds-Brown, In joining Councilwoman Blackwell, we have Councilwoman Gimm, Councilwoman Bladell Reynolds-Brown, In joining Councilwoman Blackwell, we have Councilwoman Gimm, Councilwoman Bladell Reynolds-Brown, In joining Councilwoman Blackwell, we have Councilwoman Gimm, Councilwoman Bladell Reynolds-Brown,
Thank you, Ms. President. Thank you, Ms. President. Thank you, Ms. President. Thank you, Ms. President. And we welcome not only her lovely daughters, whom I've known since they were children, And we welcome not only her lovely daughters, whom I've known since they were children, And we welcome not only her lovely daughters, whom I've known since they were children, And we welcome not only her lovely daughters, whom I've known since they were children, and certainly to Dr. Graves and members of the community, who are also here to honor and certainly to Dr. Graves and members of the community, who are also here to honor and certainly to Dr. Graves and members of the community, who are also here to honor and certainly to Dr. Graves and members of the community, who are also here to honor her, and the other members of her family who are here. her, and the other members of her family who are here. her, and the other members of her family who are here. her, and the other members of her family who are here. Resolution naming 5400 Chester Avenue and the 1400 and 1500 blocks of South 55th Street Resolution naming 5400 Chester Avenue and the 1400 and 1500 blocks of South 55th Street Resolution naming 5400 Chester Avenue and the 1400 and 1500 blocks of South 55th Street Resolution naming 5400 Chester Avenue and the 1400 and 1500 blocks of South 55th Street as "Dr. Evelyn Graves Way," in recognizing and in recognition of Dr. Graves' 45 years as "Dr. Evelyn Graves Way," in recognizing and in recognition of Dr. Graves' 45 years as "Dr. Evelyn Graves Way," in recognizing and in recognition of Dr. Graves' 45 years as "Dr. Evelyn Graves Way," in recognizing and in recognition of Dr. Graves' 45 years of exemplary service to the community. 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 Whereas, Dr. Graves is a historic treasure in southwest Philadelphia. Whereas, Dr. Graves is a historic treasure in southwest Philadelphia. Whereas, Dr. Graves is a historic treasure in southwest Philadelphia. Whereas, Dr. Graves is a historic treasure in southwest Philadelphia. Starting out in 1970s as a housewife and mother of six, she had a burning desire to Starting out in 1970s as a housewife and mother of six, she had a burning desire to Starting out in 1970s as a housewife and mother of six, she had a burning desire to Starting out in 1970s as a housewife and mother of six, she had a burning desire to reach out to the youth of her community and... reach out to the youth of her community and... reach out to the youth of her community and... reach out to the youth of her community and...
Whereas, Dr. Graves honored and acknowledged by the National Association for the Advancement Whereas, Dr. Graves honored and acknowledged by the National Association for the Advancement Whereas, Dr. Graves honored and acknowledged by the National Association for the Advancement Whereas, Dr. Graves honored and acknowledged by the National Association for the Advancement of Color People as a legend, and whereas, Dr. Graves was recognized as a pioneer in of Color People as a legend, and whereas, Dr. Graves was recognized as a pioneer in of Color People as a legend, and whereas, Dr. Graves was recognized as a pioneer in of Color People as a legend, and whereas, Dr. Graves was recognized as a pioneer in the creative and performing arts, who has empowered generations of African-American the creative and performing arts, who has empowered generations of African-American the creative and performing arts, who has empowered generations of African-American the creative and performing arts, who has empowered generations of African-American families by several presidents, including Bill Clinton and President Barack Obama. families by several presidents, including Bill Clinton and President Barack Obama. families by several presidents, including Bill Clinton and President Barack Obama. families by several presidents, including Bill Clinton and President Barack Obama. And whereas, Dr. Graves provided basic necessities of life in the community with food, housing, And whereas, Dr. Graves provided basic necessities of life in the community with food, housing, And whereas, Dr. Graves provided basic necessities of life in the community with food, housing, And whereas, Dr. Graves provided basic necessities of life in the community with food, housing, cultural arts, education, spirituality, and hope in the targeted areas of west and southwest cultural arts, education, spirituality, and hope in the targeted areas of west and southwest cultural arts, education, spirituality, and hope in the targeted areas of west and southwest cultural arts, education, spirituality, and hope in the targeted areas of west and southwest Philadelphia and Delaware County. Philadelphia and Delaware County. Philadelphia and Delaware County. Philadelphia and Delaware County.
And whereas, Dr. Graves created 37 programs in the Evelyn Graves Ministry, including And whereas, Dr. Graves created 37 programs in the Evelyn Graves Ministry, including And whereas, Dr. Graves created 37 programs in the Evelyn Graves Ministry, including And whereas, Dr. Graves created 37 programs in the Evelyn Graves Ministry, including the Evelyn Graves Drama Productions, the pre-K through 12 Grade Academy, the School the Evelyn Graves Drama Productions, the pre-K through 12 Grade Academy, the School the Evelyn Graves Drama Productions, the pre-K through 12 Grade Academy, the School the Evelyn Graves Drama Productions, the pre-K through 12 Grade Academy, the School of Performing Arts, the Daycare Center, the Christ Chapel Church, the Summer Day Camp of Performing Arts, the Daycare Center, the Christ Chapel Church, the Summer Day Camp of Performing Arts, the Daycare Center, the Christ Chapel Church, the Summer Day Camp of Performing Arts, the Daycare Center, the Christ Chapel Church, the Summer Day Camp Program, and after-school programs. Program, and after-school programs. Program, and after-school programs. Program, and after-school programs. Whereas, Dr. Graves traveled and presented over four decades of history in cultural and Whereas, Dr. Graves traveled and presented over four decades of history in cultural and Whereas, Dr. Graves traveled and presented over four decades of history in cultural and Whereas, Dr. Graves traveled and presented over four decades of history in cultural and performing arts that include showcasing by emerging artists in 35 different states, performing arts that include showcasing by emerging artists in 35 different states, performing arts that include showcasing by emerging artists in 35 different states, performing arts that include showcasing by emerging artists in 35 different states, seven different countries, including eastern and western Caribbean, and South Korea. seven different countries, including eastern and western Caribbean, and South Korea. seven different countries, including eastern and western Caribbean, and South Korea. seven different countries, including eastern and western Caribbean, and South Korea.
Whereas, Dr. Graves has reached over half a million families locally and internationally. Whereas, Dr. Graves has reached over half a million families locally and internationally. Whereas, Dr. Graves has reached over half a million families locally and internationally. Whereas, Dr. Graves has reached over half a million families locally and internationally. Whereas, Evelyn Graves Ministry's headquarters, located at the corner of 55th and Chester Whereas, Evelyn Graves Ministry's headquarters, located at the corner of 55th and Chester Whereas, Evelyn Graves Ministry's headquarters, located at the corner of 55th and Chester Whereas, Evelyn Graves Ministry's headquarters, located at the corner of 55th and Chester Avenue, has petitioned the city and its involved residents to have the streets that flank Avenue, has petitioned the city and its involved residents to have the streets that flank Avenue, has petitioned the city and its involved residents to have the streets that flank Avenue, has petitioned the city and its involved residents to have the streets that flank the headquarters to be given the honorary designation as "Dr. Evelyn Graves Way." the headquarters to be given the honorary designation as "Dr. Evelyn Graves Way." the headquarters to be given the honorary designation as "Dr. Evelyn Graves Way." the headquarters to be given the honorary designation as "Dr. Evelyn Graves Way."
Now therefore be it resolved that the Philadelphia City Council hereby names Now therefore be it resolved that the Philadelphia City Council hereby names Now therefore be it resolved that the Philadelphia City Council hereby names Now therefore be it resolved that the Philadelphia City Council hereby names 5400 Chester Avenue and the 1400 and 1500 blocks of South 55th Street as "Dr. Evelyn 5400 Chester Avenue and the 1400 and 1500 blocks of South 55th Street as "Dr. Evelyn 5400 Chester Avenue and the 1400 and 1500 blocks of South 55th Street as "Dr. Evelyn 5400 Chester Avenue and the 1400 and 1500 blocks of South 55th Street as "Dr. Evelyn Graves Way," in recognition of Dr. Graves' 45 years of exemplary service to the community. Graves Way," in recognition of Dr. Graves' 45 years of exemplary service to the community. Graves Way," in recognition of Dr. Graves' 45 years of exemplary service to the community. Graves Way," in recognition of Dr. Graves' 45 years of exemplary service to the community. Further resolved, that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Dr. Evelyn Further resolved, that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Dr. Evelyn Further resolved, that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Dr. Evelyn Further resolved, that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Dr. Evelyn Graves as a sincere expression of the Philadelphia City Council's gratitude and recognition. Graves as a sincere expression of the Philadelphia City Council's gratitude and recognition. Graves as a sincere expression of the Philadelphia City Council's gratitude and recognition. Graves as a sincere expression of the Philadelphia City Council's gratitude and recognition. Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
Chair recognizes Dr. Graves for remarks. Chair recognizes Dr. Graves for remarks. Chair recognizes Dr. Graves for remarks. Chair recognizes Dr. Graves for remarks.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I'm Dr. Cassandra Graves, Dr. Evelyn Graves' daughter, and I'm flanked by my family, all I'm Dr. Cassandra Graves, Dr. Evelyn Graves' daughter, and I'm flanked by my family, all I'm Dr. Cassandra Graves, Dr. Evelyn Graves' daughter, and I'm flanked by my family, all I'm Dr. Cassandra Graves, Dr. Evelyn Graves' daughter, and I'm flanked by my family, all six of her children that she birthed. 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 We all have worked in the organization in one capacity or another. We all have worked in the organization in one capacity or another. We all have worked in the organization in one capacity or another. We all have worked in the organization in one capacity or another. So it gives us a great honor to be able to accept this award for Dr. Evelyn Graves for So it gives us a great honor to be able to accept this award for Dr. Evelyn Graves for So it gives us a great honor to be able to accept this award for Dr. Evelyn Graves for So it gives us a great honor to be able to accept this award for Dr. Evelyn Graves for 45 years, 45 years, just reaching out and helping the underserved, those who were forgot 45 years, 45 years, just reaching out and helping the underserved, those who were forgot 45 years, 45 years, just reaching out and helping the underserved, those who were forgot 45 years, 45 years, just reaching out and helping the underserved, those who were forgot about. 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 But we are here today to say thank you to our mother, thank you for President Councilman But we are here today to say thank you to our mother, thank you for President Councilman But we are here today to say thank you to our mother, thank you for President Councilman But we are here today to say thank you to our mother, thank you for President Councilman Janie Blackwell, and all the councilmen that signed this great, great honorary destination. Janie Blackwell, and all the councilmen that signed this great, great honorary destination. Janie Blackwell, and all the councilmen that signed this great, great honorary destination. Janie Blackwell, and all the councilmen that signed this great, great honorary destination. The Evelyn Graves Ministry's departments in every area are here today. The Evelyn Graves Ministry's departments in every area are here today. The Evelyn Graves Ministry's departments in every area are here today. The Evelyn Graves Ministry's departments in every area are here today. Our drama department is here, our ministerial staff is here, our daycare, our academy young Our drama department is here, our ministerial staff is here, our daycare, our academy young Our drama department is here, our ministerial staff is here, our daycare, our academy young Our drama department is here, our ministerial staff is here, our daycare, our academy young people are represented here today, our daycare is represented. people are represented here today, our daycare is represented. people are represented here today, our daycare is represented. people are represented here today, our daycare is represented. All of these programs, our founder and our mother birthed, came out of South Carolina All of these programs, our founder and our mother birthed, came out of South Carolina All of these programs, our founder and our mother birthed, came out of South Carolina All of these programs, our founder and our mother birthed, came out of South Carolina in the 50s, got into Philadelphia, and she used her hands as a weapon to bring peace in the 50s, got into Philadelphia, and she used her hands as a weapon to bring peace in the 50s, got into Philadelphia, and she used her hands as a weapon to bring peace in the 50s, got into Philadelphia, and she used her hands as a weapon to bring peace to southwest Philadelphia. to southwest Philadelphia. to southwest Philadelphia. to southwest Philadelphia. She started with her ink pen, writing plays. 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 Her plays has traveled, King Sessin was our first stop, and it broad, it went out from Her plays has traveled, King Sessin was our first stop, and it broad, it went out from Her plays has traveled, King Sessin was our first stop, and it broad, it went out from Her plays has traveled, King Sessin was our first stop, and it broad, it went out from there, colleges and universities, and you heard the rest of the story. there, colleges and universities, and you heard the rest of the story. there, colleges and universities, and you heard the rest of the story. there, colleges and universities, and you heard the rest of the story. In Seoul, Korea, our plays were interpreted in seven different languages for 100,000 In Seoul, Korea, our plays were interpreted in seven different languages for 100,000 In Seoul, Korea, our plays were interpreted in seven different languages for 100,000 In Seoul, Korea, our plays were interpreted in seven different languages for 100,000 people at one time. people at one time. people at one time. people at one time. A play that she wrote, a play that Dr. Evelyn Graves wrote, we were able to present. A play that she wrote, a play that Dr. Evelyn Graves wrote, we were able to present. A play that she wrote, a play that Dr. Evelyn Graves wrote, we were able to present. A play that she wrote, a play that Dr. Evelyn Graves wrote, we were able to present. So, we thank God for this moment. 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 When we shared with our mother, Dr. Graves, about this honor, her first question was, When we shared with our mother, Dr. Graves, about this honor, her first question was, When we shared with our mother, Dr. Graves, about this honor, her first question was, When we shared with our mother, Dr. Graves, about this honor, her first question was, "Well, how did this happen?" 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 And I said, "Councilwoman Janie Blackwell." 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 Her next question was, "Janie Blackwell has my telephone number?" Her next question was, "Janie Blackwell has my telephone number?" Her next question was, "Janie Blackwell has my telephone number?" Her next question was, "Janie Blackwell has my telephone number?" I said, "We have Janie Blackwell's phone number." 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 So it's an honor, it's an honor to be standing with my family, to be standing with our church, So it's an honor, it's an honor to be standing with my family, to be standing with our church, So it's an honor, it's an honor to be standing with my family, to be standing with our church, So it's an honor, it's an honor to be standing with my family, to be standing with our church, to be standing with our community. 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 If Dr. Graves had the microphone right now, she would say, "Oh, Lord, our God, how excellent If Dr. Graves had the microphone right now, she would say, "Oh, Lord, our God, how excellent If Dr. Graves had the microphone right now, she would say, "Oh, Lord, our God, how excellent If Dr. Graves had the microphone right now, she would say, "Oh, Lord, our God, how excellent is thy name," able to do what she could do with what was in her hands. is thy name," able to do what she could do with what was in her hands. is thy name," able to do what she could do with what was in her hands. is thy name," able to do what she could do with what was in her hands. And 45 years later, she's still standing, and she's standing strong at 55th and Chester And 45 years later, she's still standing, and she's standing strong at 55th and Chester And 45 years later, she's still standing, and she's standing strong at 55th and Chester And 45 years later, she's still standing, and she's standing strong at 55th and Chester Avenue, now Dr. Evelyn Graves Way. 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 So we are excited about this moment, and we want you to all join in with me and keep So we are excited about this moment, and we want you to all join in with me and keep So we are excited about this moment, and we want you to all join in with me and keep So we are excited about this moment, and we want you to all join in with me and keep the vision alive. the vision alive. the vision alive. the vision alive. And how do you keep the vision alive? 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 Supporting nonprofit organizations like Dr. Evelyn Graves, Evelyn Graves Drama Productions, Supporting nonprofit organizations like Dr. Evelyn Graves, Evelyn Graves Drama Productions, Supporting nonprofit organizations like Dr. Evelyn Graves, Evelyn Graves Drama Productions, Supporting nonprofit organizations like Dr. Evelyn Graves, Evelyn Graves Drama Productions, keeping the arts alive, keeping private education alive and strong, and definitely keeping the arts alive, keeping private education alive and strong, and definitely keeping the arts alive, keeping private education alive and strong, and definitely keeping the arts alive, keeping private education alive and strong, and definitely keeping our spiritual community alive and alert. 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 Could you help me welcome and recognize my mother, Dr. Evelyn Graves? Could you help me welcome and recognize my mother, Dr. Evelyn Graves? Could you help me welcome and recognize my mother, Dr. Evelyn Graves? Could you help me welcome and recognize my mother, Dr. Evelyn Graves?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Council ladies. Council ladies. Council ladies. Council ladies.
A privilege resolution recognizing and congratulating Philadelphia native Marvin Harrison upon being elected to the Pro Football Hall of Fame.
And that will be on today's final passes calendar.
And a privilege resolution honoring and celebrating Philadelphia's African American dentists and physicians for their preservation of life, limb, health, healing, and happiness as 2016 Philadelphia Living Legends, all as part of the commemoration of Black History Month.
And that will also be in this week's final passes calendar.
And a privilege resolution authorizing joint hearings by the Committees on Public Safety and Housing Neighborhood Development and the Homeless to conduct hearings to evaluate strategies to mitigate improper mortgage foreclosures in Philadelphia.
That will be on this week's final passes calendar. Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Just for the record, Mr. Harrison is a 5th District resident. He just went to a high school in the 4th District.
Oh.
So I would like you to co-sponsor that resolution.
Thank you, Councilman. Not too often we get Hall of Famers from my neighborhood.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I have one bill, one non-privilege resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
And ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire certain land in the 30th Ward of the City of Philadelphia located along the Schuylkill River between South Street and Christian Street known as 624 Rear Schuylkill Avenue.
That bill will refer to appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution urging Congress to pass the Healthy Maternity and Obstetric Medicine Act, otherwise known as the Healthy Mom Act.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman McIlroy Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one non-privileged resolution and one privilege.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privilege resolution recognizing, congratulating, and honoring Zaire Bam Anderson on an outstanding season as a member of the Super Bowl LV champion Denver Broncos.
That will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple titled sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 18th, 19th, and 37th wards of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. I have one bill today.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections by amending Section 191303 entitled Discounts and Additions to Tax by revising the discount percentage for real estate taxes.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gill.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Thottenberger.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I have no bills nor resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple titled sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 31st Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by creating a new chapter to hold business owners responsible for nuisance behavior occurring on the business premises and within the immediate vicinity of the business to provide for enforcement and penalties and to provide for business owner meetings with registered community organizations with respect to certain appeals.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I offer two privileged resolutions. At a later date, I'd like to be heard on one of the resolutions prior to the vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution recognizing and honoring Daniel Quinn, former captain, U.S. Army, for exemplifying the highest degrees of morality and justice in the face of human rights violations while serving in Afghanistan.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privilege resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to hold public hearings concerning the city's technology, communications, infrastructure, and the policy, practice, and process for blocking emails and websites by the Office of Innovation and Technology.
This week's final passes calendar. And that concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. We will now have reports from the committee. And it's here recognizes Councilman Hina for report from the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of the Whole reports four resolutions with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee of the Whole to which is afforded Resolution Number 160035 entitled, "Our Resolution Approving the Reappointment of Beverly Coleman to the Board of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority," and Resolution Number 160036 entitled, "A Resolution Approving the Appointment of Clarina Tolson to the Board of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority," and Resolution Number 160037 entitled, "The Resolution Confirming the Appointment of Sosi Pedro Tulante Esquiaraz," the city solicitor, and a Resolution Number 160038 entitled, "The Resolution Approving the Appointment of Philoside Alanapiken Lewis to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Rate Board." Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached resolutions to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. These resolutions will be placed on our final reading passes calendar at our next session of council. We will now move to our consideration of the calendar. There being no bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilman Henan for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Bill numbers 160099, 160106, and 160108. All resolutions are being held.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Before considering these resolutions on the final passes calendar, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a resolution or a bill in the final passes calendar in today's session, if you have not already done so, we'd ask if you sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. There's a device. When a light turns green on that device, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. And when the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to testify. Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Call the name of the first witness.
Rachel La Bush. Commenting on 160106.
Good morning, President and members of City Council. I am an attorney with Community Legal Services. I am here to speak in support of Resolution Number 160106, which calls on the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, among others, to reform their sales of distressed mortgage notes to better protect homeowners from foreclosure. As many members know, Community Legal Services assists thousands of Philadelphia's poorest residents with their legal problems each year, including defending against mortgage foreclosures. Our homeownership and consumer rights unit saves homes and protects neighborhoods from blight. The Mortgage Foreclosure Diversion Program, which City Council has been very supportive of, has played a large role in helping to save these homes. Many of our low-income clients have loans that are insured by HUD through the Federal Housing Administration, or FHA. These loans come with special protections. The servicers of these mortgages, big companies like Bank of America, Wells Fargo, and City Mortgage, are required to review the homeowners to see if they are eligible for certain loan modifications before filing foreclosure. Time and again, we have seen them rush to foreclosure without properly reviewing our clients. We also see them drag out the review for years without reaching a decision on homeowners who are eligible for modifications all along. If a homeowner falls behind on her FHA mortgage, a mortgage company may assign her loan to HUD and cash in on the FHA insurance. HUD will then strip the mortgage of its FHA insurance and protections and sell the mortgage off to private investors as part of their distressed asset sale program, or DASP. The mortgage company is supposed to certify that the homeowner does not qualify for any modification, but we have seen many cases where they were never properly reviewed. Homeowners receive no warning or notification that their mortgage is about to be sold and their FHA insurance removed. Over 5,700 formerly FHA loans in Pennsylvania have been sold through these auctions already, and we estimate that several hundred of these are in Philadelphia. In fact, this has happened to at least nine of my own clients. These mortgages may be advertised to investors as so-called distressed debt, but what's really at stake here is our clients' homes and Philadelphia's neighborhoods. Our clients with DASP loans are not a lost cause. They have the ability to make payments if only their mortgage company will work with them. Unfortunately, we have seen the new investors deny people loan modifications without explanation, require huge down payments to even be considered for a modification, demand 12 months of trial payments before any modification can be made, and refuse to reduce or defer any part of the debt even though they are buying the loans at a steep discount from HUD. Now Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, the two huge government-supported enterprises, are expanding sales of their loans to private investors, and we are bracing ourselves for more of these experiences. To address this problem, HUD, Fannie Mae, and Freddie Mac should require mortgage servicers to better review homeowners for the loan modifications that they are entitled to before the loans can be sold off to investors. Homeowners should also get notice before the sale and the opportunity to dispute their eligibility for a modification. In addition, as the resolution provides, nonprofit organizations with the mission of preserving homeownership are interested in buying these loans. Therefore, we support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Shaila Lloyd.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, President, Council, and all Council members. I'm here as the family of Philadelphians. We had a resolution earlier back in October the 6th, so we appreciate you all hearing this bill again. Our concerns are that we traveled to Harrisburg Tuesday, and we found out information that's really disturbing. We have these two law firms, KML, Phil and Helen Diamond and Jones, and when all homeowners receive notices from this, they're stating that they are not lawyers, that they are debt collectors. Well, we found out in the state of Harrisburg that these two law firms are not registered to practice or act as debt collectors, that they are committing something that is really illegal. So we are bringing this to your attention, the misconduct that has been taking place by these two law firms. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, ma'am.
Johnny Young. Commenting on 160106.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
I too am a member of the families of Philadelphia, and we had some interesting things said October 6th. But I think something is a little bit more important that needs to be said about this whole process of fork lawyers. The Uniform Commercial Code is the law that governs all contracts, and a mortgage is under a contract. You sit at a settlement table and you sign what you call a promissory note. The promissory note falls under the Uniform Commercial Code. It is not supposed to be adjudicated in a common court called mortgages or for mortgages. So back to the United, to the Uniform Commercial Code, once that security instrument is signed, along with the assignment of mortgage, that assignment of mortgage and note must travel the length of 15 years or 30 years. And our government back in 2009 uncovered a mass scheme that most of the notes were all sold. So let me give you a basic analogy I think even a two-year-old might understand. If I was to write Curtis Jones a check right now off of my bank account, I hand it to him, he's allowed to go to Wells Fargo, which is my bank, and cash it. The moment he cashes that check slash promissory note, I, the landholder who issued that note, is entitled for the copy of that note to be returned back to its endorser. That is the homeowner slash landholder. This whole thing has been distorted. He who endorses a note or a check is a grantor. He or she can never be a borrower in a scheme called mortgage. So under the mortgage clause, they have us as borrowers. We are not borrowers when you are endorsing a note under the Uniform Commercial Code, not under Johnny's law, not under what I'm saying, and not what these people are saying. By law, that security instrument must be returned. And when these homeowners, landowners, are coming into court, there are a lot of judges that may not be aware of what's going on. But in Carpenter versus Logan, and I'll be real quick, the United States Supreme Court states that the note and the mortgage are inseparable. We need to start educating our courts that this is not a mortgage once it's been sold. It is a security instrument that must be returned. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Lazara Gesong. Commenting on 160106.
Okay.
Good morning.
Can you hear me?
We hear you.
Okay. Good morning, Council members. I can't see. Hold on. Just to give you a little brief explanation, I guess, as to what Johnny was saying, I'm going to read because I'm kind of nervous here. Okay. So no entity can be a creditor if they do not hold or own the asset in question. For example, a note or the property. A mortgage passed through trust called REMIC as defined in Title 26, Subtitle A, Chapter 1, Subtitle M, Part 2, Subtitle 850 through 862, cannot hold assets. For if they do, their tax-exempt status is violated, and the trust itself is void ab initio, which means it's void from the beginning. This is an indication that either the trust has either voided its intended tax-free status or the asset is not in fact owed by it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Commenting on 160106.
Morning. First and foremost, I'd like to address the, similarly, the people, because I'm here on behalf of the people. Secondly, I'd like to address the entire City Council. What we need to understand here that this is a global issue. This is not just the City of Philadelphia. It's not just the state of Pennsylvania, but it's a global issue of mortgage, what they call mortgage fraud, which is reality of security fraud. When you look up Title 15, the U.S. Code, Section 1 and 2, and Section 15B is all right there. I'm not going to drag and waste anybody's time sitting here preaching to the cap choir, so to speak, because I know on a political level and as well as an economical level, being that I did mortgage for years, I know it's no such thing as mortgage, and people's going to have to slowly but surely wake up to that reality. There is no mortgage. What it is, is a security. When you go to a closing, and I'm sure everybody here been in a closing, I want to know what check that you received. Anybody receive a check when they went to closing in this room right now? No. So what's this loan stuff everybody's talking about? It doesn't exist in my case.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Franny Robinson.
Good afternoon.
Correction, that is Farouk Robinson. Good morning. I am Farouk Robinson, natural man, widower, father of six heirs, under natural law, heir and indigenous to this land. I am a federal crime victim and witness to the egregious acts of the elected officials alleged illegal foreclosures. 42 U.S.C., 1982, all citizens of U.S. shall have the same right in every state and territory to inherit, purchase, lease, sell, hold, and convey real and personal property. This is a civil order from Pope Francis, July 4th, 2014. It was issued to all members of domestic police forces, U.S. Marshal Service, the Province Marshal, members of the American Bar Association, and American Armed Forces. All those estate estates erroneously believed to represent the American states and American state citizens and which were conveyed by fraud and legal deceit to the United States of America, minor, and more recently, the city-state and the United Nations are revenue without exception to the geographical, geographically defined American states and American state citizens, where there shall remain perpetuity as assets belonging to the rightful and lawful beneficiaries. All legal fiction entities, however structured, named after the American states and American state citizens, are returned to them and their control, free and clear of any debt, promise, encumbrance, or obligation alleged against them as a result of false claims made in their behalf by officers of the United States of America and Corporation and the United States and Corporation, or by the foreign officials operating the United States of America, minor, or the United Nations city-state falsely claiming to represent them or have jurisdiction over them. We note that the current circumstance is part the result of criminal acts engaged in 150 years ago, which result in the commercial enslavement of African-Americans who were summarily claimed as the chattels backing U.S. government debt in the wake of the Civil War. Any person, state, entity, corporation, or ideology that fails to recognize the worth, dignity, and rights of a man, that state is obsolete.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Commenting on 160108.
You must love my company, like you say in the beginning of the meeting, because you keep on welcoming me back by not doing anything about this. I, at this time, am without my home at 1038 West Wyoming due to the egregious actions and inactions of this legislative body. I quote George Mason, delegate to Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia, "Can anybody be above the law?" Truer words were never spoke by a founding father in the sacred creed of liberty. Any other founding fathers were concerned about potential abuse in the future, so they passed laws. Recently, you have passed a resolution to declare Philadelphia as a sanctuary seat, telling those who are oppressed, they are safe from predatory government here. I and others require sanctuary from you, a very oppressive government. For what government would steal from its own people? Philadelphia cannot be a sanctuary seat for new people when we steal from our own people in this egregious way. How can you feel not, how can you not feel marginalized when all you have worked for has been stripped from you and given to another? This is another clear violation of 42 U.S.C., 1982, which was previously read, and the U.S. Constitution, among other laws unnamed. Philadelphia should hang its head. In the last 22 years of my life, I've been through hell. I wake up every day living a life of uncertainty, finances in turmoil, having to make tough choices. This council is required by law to make me whole and pay this bill. You, agents and agencies, are bound by oath of office to support, obey, defend the Constitution and the laws like in Flint, Michigan. The government stalls, and these people suffer. Council passes paperwork regarding national issues for which they have no jurisdiction like the Downton Abbey bill, while ignoring these issues. As in the word of Eleanor Roosevelt in December 7th, 1941, and I'm going paraphrase, "We are one of the free and unconquerable people of the United States of America, even though our enemies are not foreign but domestic." You have taken an oath of office to support, obey, defend the Constitution and the laws. Can a fireman stare at a fire and fail to act, though you do? It is your judiciary duty to act. The law requires you to act. Now, let's get to work.
There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We now consider the resolutions on the... Councilor, did you want to?
Just like, I would like to make a comment, Mr. President.
Sure.
I've seen the gentleman who just spoke here numerous times, and my office has met with him, I believe other council staff as well. I don't want to kind of fuel flames to the fire, but I think at this point in time, it's important to let the public know that we have met with this gentleman. I certainly have. He has a lawsuit pending, and as far as my office is concerned, that issue is in court where it will be handled. But I think it is improper for the public to believe that we are somehow ignoring this gentleman. If he would like further service from my office or anyone else, I'm sure we'll be happy to meet him again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Sir, sir, no, no, we don't go back and forth. No, sir. Yeah. Thank you. We'll now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading final passes calendar. And Mr. Decker, I'd ask, would you please read the title of 160106? Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. Let me do 16009, because we do have a withdrawal.
Resolution Number 160099 entitled, "A Resolution Supporting the Passage of the Pennsylvania General Assembly's House Bill Number 262 to Help Combat Human Trafficking Throughout Pennsylvania."
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Resolution Number 160099 be withdrawn and would like to be recognized to speak briefly on this matter.
Thank you. Been moved improperly. Second, that Resolution 160099 be withdrawn. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it. 160099 is withdrawn. Mr. Decker, now read 160106. Councilwoman, did you want to speak on that? I'm sorry. Please.
I think it might be important just to put these remarks on the record. It is no secret that my staff and I have been relentless advocates for the victims of human trafficking, whom most often are women and young girls. Therefore, when legislation comes to my attention that might combat human trafficking across our Commonwealth, our ears naturally perk up. Last week, I introduced Resolution 160099, which supports Pennsylvania's House Bill 262. On its face, House Bill 262 aims to fight human trafficking. However, after subsequent homework and speaking with an unlimited number of advocacy groups from across the city and the Commonwealth, my staff and I have determined that House Bill 262 has more unintended negative consequences than positive attributes that may ultimately better serve these victims. Therefore, after considerable consideration, I am withdrawing this resolution today, and I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. It shall be noted. And, Mr. Councilman Jones, did you?
Wait, Mr. President, until the resolution.
When you were... Okay. Thank you. Resolution... Uh, resolution one six oh, one oh six.
A resolution calling on the Federal Housing Finance Agency, Freddie Mac, Fannie Mae, and the US Department of Housing and Urban Development to reform their programs for the sale of distressed mortgage notes in order to better protect homeowners from foreclosure and facilitate community redevelopment.
And Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
I thank you very much. I'd like to have the bill be moved for adoption.
Okay. It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. And resolution one six oh, one oh six is adopted. Mr. Decker, one six oh, one oh eight.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees, simple title to city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the twenty-fifth and thirty-first wards of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. And resolution one six oh, one oh eight is adopted. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolution?
A resolution. Recognizing career and technical education students and programs in Philadelphia in recognition of Career and Technical Education Month in Pennsylvania, introduced by Council, Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Been moved in probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and congratulating Philadelphia native Marvin Harrison upon being elected to the Pro Football Hall of Fame, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
I move for the adoption of the resolution. Go along.
Can I get a second? Thank you. It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and celebrating Philadelphia's African-American dentists and physicians for their preservation of life, limb, health, healing, and happiness as two thousand and sixteen Philadelphia Living Legends, all as part of the commemoration of Black History Month, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing joint hearings by the Committees on Public Safety and Housing, Neighborhood Development, and the Homeless to conduct hearings to evaluate strategies to mitigate improper mortgage foreclosures in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to speak on this resolution, if, if at all possible.
Absolutely, sir.
Um, first of all, let me thank, uh, Councilwoman Gimm for introducing the resolution to examine the federal government's role within foreclosures. And I think it's truly appropriate that we look at it, and truly appropriate for the people in this audience that it be reviewed. What this resolution does is a companion piece to look at what we do locally by way of foreclosure processes. And, um, this is not the first time in this chamber. It was heard on October sixth, uh, two thousand and fifteen, a hearing was conducted on resolution one five oh, three six one, to explore numerous, numerous citizens' complaints and allegations of improper and illegal mortgage foreclosures. Now, keep in mind that Councilwoman Tasco and, uh, now Councilman Green, uh, worked very hard on mortgage foreclosures, and when I came in oh eight, I joined them. We stopped mortgage foreclosures not once, not twice, but three times in this city of Philadelphia because the overwhelming amount of people being foreclosed upon, and the overwhelming amount of impact that it had in districts around the city. What we did with this last resolution, which, uh, expired after the legislative session, we are now reintroducing because we came up with recommendations at the local level of common sense things that we can do to safeguard, uh, the citizens of Philadelphia. It is unfair that lawyers come in and they file these things, and when citizens cannot afford lawyers to try to prepare to save their probably number-one asset they will ever buy, their home, that they are summarily dismissed because a I isn't dotted and a T isn't crossed. So what we're asking is that a neutral, uh, advocate and a technical assistance provider help them along that way. It is unfair that sometimes service of, uh, these subpoenas and these foreclosure notices are served by the same people who benefit from the actual sale of a house. And it doesn't matter if I slide it in the neighbor's door, or if I give it to an underage kid, I constitute that as good service. So many times, these citizens don't even know that they're supposed to appear in court and defend theirselves. Third thing that these people are saying, and they say it a lot more eloquent than I can, they've had to become their own lawyers to research these things, but common sense approach is that, uh, many times, all too often, what winds up happening is folks are told that, yeah, we're gonna stop the process while you get things together to appeal, to recalibrate and see if you are eligible for a diversion. And all along, there's a second timeline, constantly moving and never stopping, and they wind up being victims and put out of their house. Now, probably folk in this chambers and people that are elected have never been evicted, but at those hearings, we heard some of those stories. Other than death itself, there is nothing more disconcerting than having your lifetime asset, your property, where you lay your head, taken from you. So although sometimes they sound a little more complicated than even I can understand, their pain is real. And what we want to do is look at the recommendations that my staff and others put together, that we sent to all of you, that we are going to hold, um, departments accountable. I think it's the Sheriff's Department's, uh, ability and purview to give a proper service. And if you subcontract that out to somebody else, they damn well better be trained in the right process of it. Because this is probably the most important individual citizen's act that we can have, your right to own a property. So we're gonna look at this as we go into the budget process, to put a little money where things need to go, to put a little accountability where there should be had. But these folks here, even though they may sound a little radical, they ain't crazy. And just because you paranoid, don't mean ain't nobody following. So I join them in their protest, and I join them in their right to have due process. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Can you make a motion? Thank you. It's been moved. It has been moved and enthusiastically, uh, seconded. Uh, all those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Thank you.
And a resolution recognizing, congratulating, and honoring Zaire Bam Anderson on an outstanding season as a member of the Super Bowl fifty champion Denver Broncos, introduced by Councilwoman Ginona Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Ginona Sanchez.
I hope to get this alumni of Frankfurt High and, uh, the Frankfurt Chargers here in our, in our council chambers. I know folks were watching the show, but there was actually a game in addition to the show. Um, so I move for its adoption.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Daniel Quinn, former captain, US Army, for exemplifying the highest degree of morality and justice in the face of human rights violations while serving in Afghanistan, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Global Opportunities and the Creative Innovative Economy to hold public hearings concerning the city's tech, technology, communications infrastructure, and the policy, practice, and process for blocking emails and websites by the Office of Innovation and Technology, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Yes, Council President, could I be heard on this matter?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Um, in two thousand and twelve, uh, it was identified that a hundred and twenty million dollars would be spent to upgrade the city's, uh, technology infrastructure for communications, internet, and other things, which I think we all wholeheartedly support it. I could say that for myself. I think many citizens are eagerly awaiting the day they could do their business with the city online, from home, and all those type of things. But in the meantime, I have spoken to OIT, which otherwise does a great job, especially with our Comcast franchise hearing. But one of the things that I've found in my personal experience, and I don't know about other council members, is OIT blocks our emails, uh, and they don't tell us when they block it. So I send an email, it's blocked. I don't know, the receiver didn't get it. They're sending me emails, it's blocked. Nobody notifies me, notifies me that it's blocked. And they also block us from accessing certain websites, and so I would ask them to unblock or to allow us to access, access those websites. Um, and sometimes they're declined. I don't understand why, but I think the policy is there's an approved list, as opposed to other places where there's a disapproved list, you have to get on the approved list. And so, for example, just as recent as, uh, uh, maybe five months ago, I was trying to communicate with an attorney at, uh, one of our prestigious law firms here in Philadelphia, and, and I kept asking the attorney if he had sent me his information. He kept telling me he did, and finally, it occurred to me that maybe he was being blocked without me or him being notified, and sure enough, he was being blocked. No one notified him or me. Um, I also found that our emails to and from the entire country of South Korea was being blocked, including Hyundai Rotem, which is an employer here in Philadelphia, our communications to Korea Airlines, Asiana Airlines, Samsung Electronics, LG Chemical, Kia Motors, uh, they would just block the emails to the entire country, not knowing, letting us know that they were blocked, not letting, uh, us know that emails being sent to us were being blocked. And, um, finally, when we notified them that certain websites were being blocked, it, it took a day and a lot of effort. One of them, for example, was the Metro Newspaper here in Philadelphia. Whatever reason, the Metro was being blocked, and it took so long to unblock them. And the last I know, when we tried to do some research on some of these companies, we, we tried to get articles from the Korea Times in Korea, and that was blocked, and it was denied. We were denied access. So at this point in time, after several meetings, I would like to ask OIT, what type of technology, what their plan is, and how, at least they could let us know when they block emails and other things that, that, so that we could interface with our constituents here in Philadelphia and do our work, uh, throughout the city and outside the city. Thank you very much. With that, I'd make a motion to, uh, to adopt the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. That resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? There being none. Any speeches on the part of the majority? And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to alert my colleagues, and particularly Laura Lee, our freshman colleagues of our annual celebration of African-American History Month, uh, sponsored by, um, Leadership, wherein both council members and staff are invited to the celebration. Save the date, Thursday, February twenty-fifth, when through mute, the performing arts, music, song, and spoken word, we will celebrate African-American History Month. And then I have a few brief comments, wherein I want to salute and applaud both you and your staff for the work you have already done with the Philadelphia Energy Authority to develop a comprehensive policy initiative intended to create ten thousand jobs over the next ten years. And, uh, I think it appropriate that all of us be aware of the Philadelphia Energy Campaign document, which is available for review. This, I believe, is an incredible for our city, and one I completely endorse, particularly in my role as Chair of Council's Committee on the Environment and Sustainability. I've always been of the view that our city needs to reduce our carbon footprint, uh, for if it doesn't matters for us, it certainly matters for our children and the next generation. By investing in energy improvements in our municipal buildings, our schools, our small businesses, and low-income homes, we will not only grow our local green economy, but we will also fight to preserve and sustain our environment for our children and those generations that follow. I'm thrilled to see this comprehensive policy that will bridge the gap between economic development and environmental sustainability across sectors. This initiative will provide opportunities for recent high school graduates to become citizens who certainly understand the importance of living in a sustainable way, and it will give them a chance to learn and prepare for sustainable careers. This unprecedented initiative will provide opportunities to our city's immigrant and returning citizens' communities as well. When exploring policies around the environment, my staff and I are grounded in the following passage by Van Jones, a brilliant African-American author of The Green Collar Economy, and a former special advisor to President Barack Obama on green jobs, wherein he states, and I quote, "What good is a green economy? What good is an energy efficiency jobs initiative if at the end of the day, it is just eco-apartheid with ecological haves and ecological have-nots?" End of quote. Mr. President, we are excited about this initiative. It has enormous potential, and I close by thanking you again for this vision. We look forward to working hand in hand with your office, the Philadelphia Energy Authority, and a cross-section of stakeholders as we continue down this road to create meaningful numbers of good green jobs for Philadelphia residents that will help provide training and lift so many of our people out of poverty. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I would just like to say that there are a lot of people involved in this process that got us to the point where we feel comfortable, uh, laying out what we believe to be very significant, uh, strategic strategy. Uh, I also want to say we're gonna get started right away, because I'm way out on a limb with promising ten thousand jobs, so we'll probably have a meeting next week to start the process.
Very well.
All right?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Um, this evening, I will be hosting a meeting to form the School Kill River Trail Town Watch as a result of, over the several past months, uh, recent incidents of crime and violence on the trail. And we will be working with stakeholders such as Philadelphia Run Two One Five, the Bicycle Coalition, the Philadelphia Police Department, the School Kill River Development Corporation, and the Center of City Residents Association, to make sure that when people come out and enjoy themselves, um, along the trail, and you represent part of the trail as well, um, they can enjoy themselves in a peaceful environment. I remember when, um, I was a little consistent in working out and making sure I'm getting out during the summertime, uh, with my wife, and, uh, running and walking along the trail, I would run into Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown. And the reason why this issue is there to me is because when we're out on the trail, we'll, we are civilians. No one recognizes us as a council, as a member of city council. And with that being said, that will also, um, not, uh, prevent anyone from knocking us upside out here while we're working out on the trail. And so that meeting is gonna take place, um, this evening at six PM, um, at the Lloyd Bull House Road Hall. I have also informed your staff to come out to participate, since we both reckon, represent, um, the trail, and from this point forward, uh, we will begin the process of creating the School Kill River Trail Town Watch, which will be, um, organized by my office, but most importantly, uh, the members will be stakeholders who are stepping up to the plate to play a role as civilians in making sure that School Kill River Trail is safe. On another note, Council President and members, um, last year, Council President, you and I, um, sponsored legislation to transfer two million dollars into the Housing Trust Fund for use in programs that provide strategic and energy-efficient home repairs for low-income households and low-income neighborhoods, along with the agenda of creating, um, neighborhoods of choice, regardless of an individual's checkbook and/or pocketbook. I am currently actively working to transfer a city-owned vacant land in Point Breeze and Grace Ferry, which is currently rapidly developing in the land bank, in order to begin a strategic planning process to prioritize affordable housing and community-based green space. To date, the legislation has authorized the transfer of approximately a hundred and fifty vacant properties into the land bank, with more coming this month. Recently, I worked to initiate an affordable housing development project in Point Breeze on the thirteen-hundred block of South Capitol Street and the fourteen-hundred block of South Taylor Street, uh, which will be which will be known as the Mamie Nichols Affordable Housing Project. A family of four with a household income of less than $40,000, $40,000, would be eligible, so these units will be truly affordable. And there was an article written about this particular project in Tuesday's Plan Philly article. I'm also working with affordable housing advocates like Habitat for Humanity to find other synergies of city-owned properties to select for affordable housing. Last month, I introduced Bill Number 160012, which will extend the benefits of longtime owner occupants program, the Loop program, which we created in city council, to again make sure that we are supporting long-term residents. I believe that if we could support developers by providing them a tax abatement, we can surely support long-term residents by extending the Loop tax relief program to individuals either deceased or transfer their property if they decide to move on with their lives. And so, again, this is a part of my agenda to make sure that, particularly throughout the Second Councilmatic District, anyone, regardless of their pocketbook or checkbook, can truly live in a diverse neighborhood, a neighborhood that provides quality services, but most importantly, a neighborhood they can be proud of. And so I look forward to having a hearing on the Loop Extension Bill in the Finance Committee on March 9th. And so I just want to thank you, Council President, for the opportunity to give me these remarks, and just wanted to update my constituents on the work that I have been doing, particularly around this very critically and important issue. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President, and I'm certainly enjoying the conversation regarding jobs and job creation. Nationwide, more than 1,000, more than 1 million skilled jobs are available, but often go unfilled because of the skill sets of the workforce that do not meet the demand of the jobs. There are high-wage, high-skill, high-demand jobs across diverse employment sectors, from transportation and manufacturing to agriculture and STEM careers, as we were talking about with the green, green jobs and the energy jobs that we're discussing here today. These are the kind of jobs that will strengthen and grow Philadelphia's economy now and in the future. A career in technical education can provide young Philadelphians with the particular knowledge and specialized skills that graduate high school and make them ready for college or to fulfill those careers. Studies show that high school students involved in CTE are more engaged, they perform better, and they graduate at a higher rate. Among Philadelphia's 123 CTE programs, the average daily attendance is above 90%. The graduation rate in 2014 is at 90%. The district-wide average is at 65%. I want to praise the nearly 6,000 Philadelphia school district students who are enrolled in the CTE programs and more than 16,300 students who applied for admission to the CTE programs right here in the city. So the CTE education is more than just industrial arts. It is a real way to address the skill sets and the skills gap that stuns our economy and hurts the workforce right here. And I'm proud to honor the CTE students and celebrate the month of February as Career and Technical Education Month in the City of Philadelphia, and look forward to putting Philadelphia children to work in our Philadelphia economy. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to remind colleagues and council staff that the Public Health Management Corporation, also known as PHMC, will be having a briefing for us immediately following council in the caucus room.
Thank you so much, Councilman. And with that, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that city council stand adjourned until Thursday, February 18th, 2016, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. The council stand adjourned until Thursday, February 18th, 2016, 10:00 a.m. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you all very much.